Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Let me go get Mr. Daley in here and we'll go over the incidental changes. We're live, we're open. And we're gonna start with the insubstantial changes to the plan previously approved.
Alright, ooh. So, to provide some of our board members with a little bit of background, I know right now John is the only one who is here for this original permitting process, but Soul Street is the 40B project going in off of Salem Street. It is 192 units, I believe. Correct me if I'm wrong, Bill? Okay. And so, we are getting to the final stages of the permitting process for this, as far as building permit, et cetera, et cetera. And so, in your meeting packet, you have a letter from Bill Daley, who's a project manager for this. And in that, it outlines a couple of insubstantial changes to the plan, which need administrative approval for, from the Board of Appeals for. So, I don't, it's, now it's all out of order, your meeting packet. But it is in there. Bill is here, if you would like him to speak to this at all.
Sure, if you want to summarize.
So, we had a few changes.
Uh, what, Bill, you need a microphone?
Would you like to go to the mic, or do you just like this?
That'd be great, thank you.
Uh, so there were a few changes. I don't have to say my name or anything, right?
Yes, you do.
Bill Daley, Soul Street, Groveland. So, a couple of the changes were buildings one and two, we, we're gonna convert two bed, a two-bedroom in each building to a one-bedroom to allow for a, an entry on the top, on the high side of each building, which will be better access to, to get to the clubhouse and other amenities on the site. It's not 100% done deal, but it, it's possible, that that could, could change. After the architectural drawings were completed, we needed, we, we were off one foot in elevation from garage to finished floor, so some of the, the finish grades had to change. The clubhouse, in the span of the permitting process, one of the big issues with this type of development is the mail, Amazon packages and stuff. So, we added a parcel room to the clubhouse. So, everyone will go there, so it was like, I think, 800 square feet, and it changed the, the layout a little bit up there. We didn't lose any parking spaces or anything with that. And the last change, I, well, there's two, two other changes, I'm sorry. Another change was the ponds, from the original drawings after going through Concom, after ZBA and peer review with Concom, we, we ended up utilizing some old quarry ponds and removed another, a different area for, for drainage. And that, that was, you know, over a three or four-month period going through Concom with that. So, that, that's another change from the, from the ZBA plan, but it is on the Concom plan. And then he has both of those. And the last one, which isn't really a change, but prior to the building permit, is the, the fire panel drawings. We have a sprinkler design, but we don't have the fire panel drawings because we don't have a electrician yet. You know, we don't, so we won't, there's probably a dozen different ways to, to design that or wire that, and we won't know how or who's doing that until the contractor is selected.
Chief's gonna sign off on that, the fire chief's gonna sign off on that.
Fire chief's already signed off. Him and Sam agreed on, we could go to DEC before, we, they need that and fire harness. But water's throughout the site and I don't see an issue, I mean, we should have that once the, once we get their bids.
You also, I received an email from the fire chief yesterday. It is at the very back of your meeting packet. It's the second-to-last thing in there. And it's an email from him, just saying that he's, he's fine with foundations prior to the fire panel, fire alarm tier-one paperwork review. So, the fire chief, we have documentation.
My understanding, the first two buildings are about three months of foundation work because of the high wall and, and steelwork.
One more thing, there was the landscape plan too. I don't know if you want to speak to that.
Oh, there's an outstanding landscape plan that, we do have a landscape architect that's selected, but nothing's been designed 100% just yet, entranceways and stuff like that. But for, for the most part, it's, it's, it's ready to go, just once everything's finalized.
So, was there any reason that these things were asked for before the building permit would be authorized? Such as the, the fire panel drawings and the landscaping plan?
I, I was not working for the town when the original permit was issued, but if I were to imagine an answer, I think it would be because it's one of those kind of boilerplate requirements that we put into our regular subdivision rules and regulations. And for smaller-scale projects, for example, like 912 Salem Street, we would want to see that landscape plan and fire protection plan prior to a building permit, but they're much smaller projects. There aren't as many moving pieces and things of that nature. So, I would imagine it's just kind of a, a holdover from other types of permits that we issue. But I don't know if, Bill, you, I mean, you were here during this process, and John, I don't know if...
We went over that landscape plan.
A proposed one, I, yeah.
Yeah, there's, but not this finalized.
Yeah.
I mean, the caliper of the trees and stuff going in was all specified and all that.
Yeah, that's all on the permit, it's just the layout of everything, which is constantly changing on a project of this size, so. But the lighting plan, once that's, you know, completely designed, that, that may even change.
Yeah.
You know, so, but it's a requirement to come back to the ZBA prior to a building permit for any insubstantial, or, or substantial changes.
We'll have to do an administrative approval again of the final plan.
Right.
Prior to this, but, you know, there are some hurdles.
Right now, you're just looking for the approval of the incidental changes for widening the landscape area, adding the hallway and entry for the...
Correct.
And then modifying the unit.
Well, it'll be modifying the unit, the, the grade change, and the changes in the, the drainage ponds from going through the conservation process.
And that's what Sam was requesting.
Yeah, so Sam just needs to sign off from ZBA, needs to see that I went to ZBA with any, you know, significant or insignificant, substantial and substantial changes. That's all.
And the ponds are all Concom-approved anyway, aren't they?
Yeah, so that's, that's what I mean. So, things changed after I left ZBA and went to Concom, things changed there, so.
So, essentially, there's two different things that you're looking at. There is the changes to the plan, the mailroom, that landscaping, and then there's changes to the permit, so allowing for the foundation permit to be issued prior to landscaping and the fire, uh, uh, plan. So, it's kind of, there's two separate things you're looking at, and within those are different items.
So, what do you think, John? You've, since you've been on... I don't have a problem with it. Yeah, I definitely don't have a problem with it. Okay. So, we'll go ahead and make the approvals necessary, so Sam can move forward with issuing the permit? Yes. So, I'll make the motion? Sure. You second it?
Yep.
All in favor? And one, one that was late to the...
I appreciate that, though.
Apologies for being late.
I blocked you in. Alright, thank you very much.
Thank you. Alright, Chris, it's all yours.
No, you, you got it down, keep going.
No, no. I was, I was pushing off on him.
He was looking at me.
Alright, so that's a wrap, right?
What do we have, the garage? The hearing for Soul Street, but I didn't see anybody here, that's why I skipped over it. Yeah.
Yeah, it's just Kevin and Scott.
Oh. I didn't realize that you were here for.
I mean, this is a nice draw, but, you know. Alright, so, uh, so, public hearing, new application 2024-4 for 944 Salem Street, Unit H, applicant Scott Edwards, GML Utility Services Cooperative. A public hearing in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 48, as amended for application 2020, 2024-4, made by Scott Edwards, GML Utility Services Cooperative, for the premises located at 944 Salem Street, Unit H, MAP 49, Lot 018-1, in the industrial one zoning districts and owned by Groveland Municipal Light Department, for a special permit in accordance with Section 50.4.5 Table of Uses of the Groveland Zoning Bylaw for a motor vehicle repair shop. Alright, and we have the, the applicant?
Uh, yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, good, good.
Alright, do you, do you want to walk us through?
Um, sure, absolutely. So, um, yeah, so, the, the GML Utility Services Co-op is a cooperative that was formed under Mass. State Chapter 164, which is the same statute that the light plants in Massachusetts are formed under. So, we were formed by three utilities, Groveland, Middleton, and Littleton. So, our, our, I guess, mission statement is to provide services to municipal light departments that they don't currently have and that they need. So, you know, one of these services is vehicle maintenance, you know, more specifically, probably, you know, bucket truck, digger truck, maintenance and repairs. So, we've been kind of operating on a part-time basis out of a, the Littleton Light Department, out in Littleton, Mass. But we're, you know, trying to open this garage at, in Groveland to, you know, service other municipal light departments. We have quite a few in the area. You know, obviously, we have Groveland, Georgetown, Rowley, Merrimack, Ipswich, you know, Middleton, Danvers, Wakefield. So, that's, that's what our plan for that space is.
Alright, thank you. Do we have a question for the applicant by the board?
Is the space sufficient for your bucket trucks and whatnot to be serviced in that area? Since it was auto repair, the garage big enough and everything?
Yeah, yeah, actually, Kevin Snow had some taller doors put in, put in to fit the bucket trucks. Because I guess the previous owner, there was tall doors there, and he reduced the size of them, so we went back to the tall doors. Other than that, it's a great space. It's, it's actually perfect for getting, you know, bucket trucks in. We're gonna end up with two lifts, one heavy lift for the big trucks, and then like a two-post lift for smaller vehicles, like, you know, pickups or one-ton dumps or whatever, whatever need be. But there's plenty of space in there for, for what we're looking to do.
Now, when the trucks come in, are they gonna come in for service, like, on an as-needed basis? There's not gonna, are there gonna be like 20 or 30 trucks hanging around doing nothing, or is it just...
No, that, it, it'll be, it'll be scheduled.
Yeah.
You know, yeah, everybody will schedule when to bring the trucks in, you know. But, you know, a lot of times, they'll probably be dropped off, maybe the day before, they, they need to be worked on, and then as soon as they're done, they'd be out of there. And it's, it's not gonna be a garage that's open to the public. It's, you know, like I said, we're concentrating on, on the municipals to, to, to service those type of trucks.
Is the, um, building equipped for, I, I know it was previously an auto repair space, but is the building equipped to handle, like, any industrial waste and whatnot that you might produce?
It, well, we will equip it for that. So, really, the biggest waste is gonna be the oil. So, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna store four 55-gallon drums of, of new oil. And then we have a, our plan is to get a 330-gallon waste tank that would be, you know, removed by a waste oil company when it's full. That's, you know, that's the bulk of our, you know, waste. We'll probably also do the same thing with antifreeze. There's, you know, you can recycle antifreeze, you put it in the correct containers, and then they come and pick it up and recycle it. So, nothing's gonna be disposed of on-site.
Hi, Kevin Snow, Groveland Light Department. Just to back up some of what Scott said there, you know, we did have some modifications done to the building, because we do use it, or did use it, prior for storage, for trucks that we have that aren't frontline trucks and/or, you know, wire trailers, so on and so forth. So, that, you know, that unit's been in use, it's been modified so that it can go back to a use like Scott's mentioned, and it's gonna provide a service that we desperately need. We've been chasing down different vehicle service providers for, geez, the 10 years that I've been here. We've probably gone through three different places. And GML, you know, rightfully figured out that that's a service that we could provide. So, we're excited to have it there. The other thing as far as storage of vehicles goes, if there's an overflow of vehicles that can't fit in the garage for GML, one of the things that Groveland Light would like to do would be to store those out back, so they're not in the view of the public. We do have cameras out back, so we can monitor what's going on with them. It's just, it's a good, secure location for it. We're excited about the possibility of having GML in our building. Thank you.
Thank you. Jason, any questions?
No. None?
Just a couple notes on my end. I did send this out, per usual, to all of the relevant departments and other boards and commissions, and received no comments back, except for, from the light department, who were, as you can imagine, in favor of it, but I didn't think I needed to include that in your packet. Additionally, just since John had asked about the hazardous waste, I took a double-check look. This is not within our aquifer zone, so just a note for the, the board there. And then, I didn't include it in your meeting packet, but I created a boilerplate for our special permits, and I put that in the back of our meeting packet, just in case anyone wants to take a look at it.
Back again real quick, too, just to touch on one other thing. We did have a Chapter 34 study done on this. I don't know how much you guys have to do with Chapter 34s, but they did come in, they looked at the building, they saw one modification that had to be done to it, which was an emergency light in the bathroom. So, that's on order, it'll be installed. Other than that, that building's ready to rip.
You know, the previous tenant for that facility was also a similar function, so.
Yeah, and, and my question about hazardous waste was just because I know the previous tenant was probably in there for quite a while. And I just wanted to make sure that, I know sometimes when you're in a space for a long time, that sometimes you don't think about...
Yeah.
You know, those kinds of things, so. Now that it's being repurposed, make sure that it's all being done right.
Take a fresh look at it.
Yep. So, good dear. I have no more questions.
Alright, and since there is, there is no public here for comments? Alright, does anyone like to file a motion?
Yeah, I'll make the motion to approve the application 2024-4 for the...
Special permit.
The special permit, correct.
I'll second.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Awesome. Thank, thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you for providing service to the town.
Yeah, thank you.
You've made someone very happy in our audience here.
Thanks.
Thank you, Kevin.
Alright, next up, Annie, review the new draft application format.
Yes, really quick on the 944 Salem Street, so I will draft the special permit for it and get it off to the board for approval at the next meeting. I mean, we'll get to when the next meeting's going to be, but with, you know, the findings and everything, because that still needs to be done, and signatures and et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So, I will get that done and off for review probably sometime next week, just for timeliness. But yes, I can hop into the application if the chair would like me to. So, in your meeting packet, you can see a brand-new zoning board of appeals application, which covers both special permits and variances. Appeals of the building inspector, which we also do here, it, really, the, they, an application packet for that is going to be pretty minor, as far as, they're not gonna need the same materials that a special permit or variance did. That's why you don't really see much in there for that. But as you can see, it's, it's a lot different from the one we are currently functioning with. It is a significantly more comprehensive, what was it?
Was it dankly?
Yeah. It's, it's significantly more comprehensive. It, and I mentioned this in, in, I think, the last meeting, it, while it does seem like a lot more, it really will provide both the board, but the applicant as well, with an easier application process, I believe. There'll be less back and forth, I think there'll be less confusion, et cetera, et cetera. So, if anyone has any comments on it, please let me know. I did share this with our town administrator and our building inspector. As our town administrator is the former, former town planner, and our building inspector, I mean, he, he's been doing this stuff for a long time, so he's really familiar with these applications and kind of what to look for and, and things of that nature. So, they've both taken a look at it, and I've taken their comments under advisement as well. But I, of course, you are the board, so I am also looking for your comments and your, any advice you could add to this application.
I mean, for me, I, I looked through it, I think it's a, it's an upgrade from what we have now, for sure. I think, I think it's much more clearly laid out. It, it is more comprehensive, which, which I like, but it seems an easier lift, even though it's more comprehensive.
Yeah, and I think it's, I don't know if it came through in the PDF that I sent you, but anything that's underlined, for example, under, like, project-type use regulation, that's a hyperlink. Yeah, to our bylaw, so I think that will also help with folks. So.
I love it.
Groveland adapting to modern times.
Yes, so if the board is okay with it, I didn't make it fillable right now, because it's just, it takes a lot of time on Adobe to do it. So, if I was gonna make any more changes, I was gonna, I was gonna wait. So, if the board would like, and also another note, if we do go, if the board does choose to adopt this new application, I have given an application out to someone, the old one already, so you might see one more of the old one, just...
Alright. Would you, would you like to see an official, official endorsement by the board?
We will, yes, we will need one.
I would like to make a motion to endorse the new Town of Gro, Groveland Zoning Board of Appeals application as drafted by the town planner.
Second.
All those in favor? Unanimous. So endorsed.
Thank you so much for doing that work.
Yeah, appreciate it.
Thank you, Annie.
I'm very excited about it.
We are too.
I think, I do think, I'm excited for when we get our next application, because I think it's gonna make a big difference.
Or more straightforward.
Alright, moving on here, so approval of minutes.
I was not, and I apologize, I was not able to get the December 6th or January 3rd minutes to you guys in time. I had a lot of stuff come up Monday, so I wasn't able to get it done. I actually finished them today, but I didn't think that would be enough time for you guys to read them. So, apologies, you only have the October 4th and November 1st minutes ready right now.
Just for the record, I have two October 4th.
Yeah, you, no, you, you dated the November 1st minutes incorrectly at the top, but they are the November 1st minutes.
Oh, the October 4th one?
Yes.
At the bottom, at the footer, you can see that the date is correct.
Exactly.
Yep.
No, it was just a typo.
Yep.
So, okay, the November 4th needs to be relabeled at the top?
Yeah, November 1st.
The November 1st needs to be relabeled to, at the top of the...
Yep.
Okay, that's not as bad as I thought it was gonna be. Okay, thank you.
Motion to approve the October 4th, 2023, and November 1st, 2023...
You have to do it separately.
Oh.
Because we have some...
Oh, right. Motion to approve October 4th, 2023 minutes?
Second.
Those in favor?
I abstain.
Three approve, one abstain? Motion to approve November 1st, 2023 minutes, as amended with, with the changes that will come at the top of the page to correct the date.
Second.
All those in favor? Three, three approve, one abstain, John, because you were absent that day? John was absent?
Oh, yes.
Yeah. So, so, three, three approve, one abstain? Yeah. 3-1-3-1, yeah.
3-1-3-1, yeah.
Alright, town planner update?
Alright. As I kind of alluded to right before, the Mexican restaurant on Elm Park, they are at the finish line. I reviewed a draft application with the applicant Monday, I think, and they're right at the finish line. Because they leased the space, they need the owner's signature. So, they're trying to coordinate with the owner to get that signature on the application. So, I'm hoping they're able to do that by the end of this week, so we could hopefully get it on the agenda for April 3rd. Which actually, time is kind of with noticing, it might have to be pushed to May, because of the noticing requirements in the newspaper. So, we'll see. Yeah. Okay, so, and, and other than that, I don't have any updates. Oh, yes, so the thing in the back of your meeting packet, I added in an, an effort to continue to try to streamline processes. I put together a boilerplate zoning board decision for a special permit, which includes, you know, your, the typical language we always use. It also includes already the seven criteria, excuse me, the seven criteria for special permits, as well as, you know, the requirements, you know, for special permits. All votes need to be recorded separately as to who voted what. It has some of our typical conditions regarding, you know, signs shall adhere to the Groveland Zoning Bylaw article, Section 11, and, and things like that. So, it's just something I wanted the board to know that is, is something that is now within our repertoire.
Very nice.
It definitely makes my job a little bit easier moving forward with, you know, different special permits. So, it, it allows me to do it much quicker. So, that's all that is, I just wanted the board to see that it's done.
Nice work.
Thank you, and that's all I have. And there were no other items that I received prior to the time of posting the agenda, or... And there were no other items that I received prior to the time of posting the agenda, or, you know what I mean.
Gentlemen, any other items? I'll make a motion to adjourn at 8:02. All those in favor? So adjourned, thanks, everybody, have a good night.